I'm gonna start on time. Okay, seven o'clock. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 19th Regular Council Meeting. The meeting now come to order. But before I started, I want to announce tonight, we're going to have two meetings. The first meeting is regular meeting. After we will do the regular meeting, we'll right away start the special council meeting. Tonight invocation will be led by Pastor Kelly Dupay from Faith Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Legion led by Mayor Proton Lopez Viado. And all right, please. And Pastor Kelly, would you please?
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the privilege of living and working in the city of West Covina. And God, I thank you for our city council and pray that you would bless this meeting tonight. Lord, give them wisdom as they guide us through this troubling and challenging time that we find ourselves in. And Lord, we do lift up all of the those that are serving us right now, especially those in the fire department and the police department. Lord, we pray you would bless them with success. We pray for nurses and doctors and that you would keep them all safe and bless them with success as well. God, we thank you once again that you are gonna get our nation and our world through this virus, through this pandemic. And God, we pray for your healing. We pray for your blessing. We pray for the victory that you have for us. So God bless the city council tonight. Give them wisdom, Lord, in the decisions that they need to make and let your presence be felt as they decide these things. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 Mayor Proton? Mayor Proton? Let it Lopez?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, every, uh, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands and for which it is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Have a seat, please. City Attorney, have any informa- okay, sorry. Go to our, uh, City City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilman Castellanos?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Mayor Proton Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Wu?
Here.
Okay, now we move to the City Attorney. Have any information to report out for the, from the close?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we move to the presentation. And tonight, we have one presentation from the Walnut Grove Middle School Achieved 3000 and we have a PowerPoint presentation too. Now, we're going to, okay, hand over to Principal Rich Naboo, say a few words and to show us how magnificent, okay, he for our school. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Mayor Wu, City Council, West Covina community and Walnut Grove families and staff. I'm Rich Naboo, Principal of Walnut Grove Intermediate School. And I am so proud to recognize 20 of our top Achieved 3000 students. Achieved 3000 is a reading program that has had phenomenal results at Walnut Grove over the last five years. It has helped our students to grow an average three grade levels per year. So in the two years they're at Walnut Grove, on average, students grow six grade level. That's unbelievable. It has been part of Walnut Grove's district's success as the school over the last five years with the top attendance, grades, reading scores, and behavior. Achieved 3000 is an online program that has students read informational texts at their reading level and answer questions and write about it. The students we are going to honor tonight have either passed out of the College and Career Program, which means students that are already reading at college and beyond, or students who have raised their reading scores five to six grade levels in one term. Let's give them a great big virtual hand. I'm going-
Yay!
Yay, yeah. So I'm gonna read first-
I saw some of my photos.
Yes. The, uh, students who have raised their reading Lexile levels by five to six grade levels in the first semester. It's an unheard of accomplishment. Alyssa Ing. Congratulations. Marcus Tolentino. Congratulations. Jayla Rios. Congratulations.
We're reading for the next slide.
Malin Martin. Congratulations. Yessenia Munoz. Congratulations. Brian Lee. Congratulations.
Next slide, please.
Frank Delgadoio. Congratulations. Lucia Garcia Fierro. Congratulations. And these next students are the ones whose reading Lexile levels have gone beyond the college level to the top Achieve program in our middle school. Next slide. Our first student is Nathan Soriano. Congratulations. Benson Yang. Congratulations. Vincent Hun. Congratulations. Amy Zatino. Congratulations. Ansh Kumar. Congratulations. Matthew Santos. Congratulations. Troy Abad. Congratulations. Landon Macias. Congratulations. Catherine Torres. Congratulations. Matthew Torres. Congratulations. And James Vega. Congratulations. We are so proud of all of you. Thank you for families coming. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing our students. And families, we will send certificates at a later date. Thank you, Mayor Wu. Thank you, City Council. On behalf of Walnut Grove, we are so appreciative.
Yeah, thanks.
I'd like to say congratulations. And though they couldn't be with us, it's nice to see them virtually and having their photos put a face with their names. So thank you very much for all that you do and the children. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. You are so welcome. And take care and blessings for all that you do for our city.
Yeah, thank you, Principal Naboo. The outstanding, magnificent job from your leadership. So we have all those outstanding children for their magnificent futures. Good job. Thank you for coming and share with us, okay? And hopefully, we can have their PowerPoint again so we can share in our city website. But thank you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna move to oral communication. Okay, due to current and ongoing public health urgency, oral communication are being accommodated via email and telephone call. The Assistant City Clerk now will read the oral communication that will receive by 6:30 this evening. Then place a telephone call that will request by 6:30 this evening. So Assistant City Clerk, how many speaker we have tonight?
Good evening, Mayor. We have seven speakers tonight. Three of them are phone calls. I will read our speakers first and then I will make phone calls.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Our first, our first speaker is by Mr. Jay Meter. Good evening. While reading the updated budget and finance policies resolution, I noticed that the number one goal is to identify stakeholder priorities, needs, and concerns. Among other mechanisms that might be considered are special public hearings, meetings of leading residents and resident interest groups. I would point out that this goal and the other three goals are not mandates, but nevertheless are still attainable. I would hope that this council and future councils would incorporate some kind of this stakeholder input into the public discussion that precedes city decision making. While it is not a resident interest group per se, the Finance and Audit Committee has to be considered a valuable source for input. The city enjoys the services of an expert in the field of basically at no cost. And it wouldn't be a mistake not to benefit here. At the last city council meeting on May 5th, I commented on the absence of the Audit Committee and a lack of meetings. My comment was not addressed, nor my question on the subject answered, and I cannot help but wonder why, again. A follow-up contact would put the city in a favorable light. It has been nearly four months now since the Finance and Audit Committee last met and according to the city website, the committee will meet at least quarterly at City Hall and shall hold other meetings on an as-needed basis. The expert advice from the Finance and Audit Committee is needed now more than ever, but there is no meeting scheduled. There is no logical reason meetings cannot be held. I do feel it necessary to point out that resident interest groups and commissions and committees are not effective if they are only used as rubber stamps for the agenda of a city council. Our second speaker tonight is Mr. Frederick Sykes. Public comment on West Covina City Council Meeting, Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Hello, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, a 42-year resident and former mayor of the city. Agenda item number five, ordinance number 2470, telecommunications towers in the public right-of-way. Please vote no on 2470. The added installation of a large amount of cell towers on our front lawn in close proximity to and atop our residential properties without our permission and/or request is a major failure to recognize that you are taking away our civil rights and subtracting from the investment made by the residents in our property, community, and this city. This is unacceptable. Therefore, I write this protest. Please stop the harm by voting no to pass this new telecommunications tower law. With the addition of thousands of new cell tower installations, our city council is defacing, degrading our standard of living, grossing out and making the city of West Covina an undesirable place to live, work, and enjoy our property as in life. It was very bad when years ago, our former city council members first gave a variance that allowed for cell tower companies, an SCE, former subterranean cabinets, to be installed above grounds in our parks and peseos in violation of our undergrounding utility laws. Enough campaign funds can buy most anything away from the taxpayers as evidenced by reviewing many of the former and current official campaign statement forms submitted at all levels of our government from local to federal. This new WCMC cell tower installation law is discriminatory by providing greater protection with fewer cell towers for the wealthier and large residential property lots, R1, than less affluent, more densely, and multifamily-developed housing, large apartment complexes, condominiums, duplexes, mobile home parks, row houses, and smaller, single-family residential lot developments area of the city. VC Plans Community Development Number One. In particular, there is the matter of an increased and unfair burden of exposure to the negative impact of cell tower installation, plus the loss in aesthetics, civil rights, property rights, property value decrease, and enjoyment of our property and a takeaway of the type of plans, community, and environment that we purchased and invested in. Our city council is laying the foundation for various types of civil rights violation and legal action. Please vote no on this new 2740 telecommunications tower law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. We'll go to the next one, please.
Yes, the next one is from Ms. Valerie Munoz. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council members. My name is Councilmember Valerie Munoz from the city of La Puente, but most importantly, I am your representative on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority. As your elected official on the WQA, representing cities with non-pumping rights, one of the pledges I make to local cities was to keep you informed of the status of cleanup efforts. Today, I want to provide an update on the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, including a few new changes to our organization, but most importantly, just a quick overview to reassure the city of West Covina that during this pandemic, we are still committed to the continuous clean water efforts. Our agency has been assured that broadly, water treatment products and services fit within the category of essential services designated by both federal and state government, which allow us to remain open for business during COVID-19. Our goal is to continue to safeguard our community's drinking water, our treatment facilities, continue to work with no interruptions to ensure the San Gabriel Basin water supply is treated properly and distributed to local water agencies to provide safe drinking water to our residents. In addition, I want to inform the appointment of our new executive director, Randy Scholemann. Mr. Scholemann has been with the agency for over 20 years as our senior engineer. With the well-deserved retirement of our current executive director, Mr. Ken Manning, Mr. Scholemann will be taking over the reins as the executive director this summer. As we face this pandemic crisis around the world, all eyes are on the spread of COVID-19. This pandemic has been challenging for families, communities, and government. There is no doubt on the severity of the public health crisis we are facing. It is during these trying times that the community unity will make us stronger and get us through this. I want to thank the Honorable Mayor and City Council for your leadership and working relationship with the WQA. I have also provided a PDF copy of the San Gabriel Water Basin Water Quality Annual Report for your review.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Munoz. Okay, and thank you so much for your update. And, um, next one, please.
Yes. I have, um, a public comment from Ms. Jerry Patress.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Audit Committee, now Finance and Audit Committee, was established in 2015 by resolution upon the recommendation of the State Controller's Office and the Los Angeles County Grand Jury to oversee the audit function. The committee was later expanded to include the review of all financial information. Consequently, the Finance and Audit Committee has a very unique purpose. This committee also has the support and confidence of the residents. Many residents indicated they did not support the recently failed measure WC sales tax initiative due to the elimination of the Audit Committee. It is the residents committee. Residents are the majority stakeholders in the city of West Covina. I recommend that the attached financial policies be amended to include the following statement. In support of complying with this policy, the Finance and Audit Committee will make an independent quarterly report to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have another, um, another, um, speaker. Give me one moment, please. A public comment from Ms. Elsie Messman.
Yep, go ahead.
You guys finally realized that money does not grow on trees. When the new, when the new manager, Carmini, was hired, he fired the police chief and the fire chief. Now, the decision is coming back to bite the council in the butt. With both chiefs filing lawsuits, maybe the new city manager needs to go because he certainly has not made good decisions. Some people hated Chris Freeland for the years, but he did not give raises that he knew the city could not afford. The city council and the city manager got us into this mess. Now get us out. And then, if you will give me a couple of minutes, I have some phone calls to make.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Our first speaker will be Ms. Colleen Rosati.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Good evening. Thank you. Colleen, Colleen Rosati, City President for the city of West Covina. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and the community. I hope, I hope you and your families are all doing well. Um, a couple of things I wanted to bring up tonight. On April 21, I submitted a report that highlighted the second quarter financial report for the fiscal year 2019-20, with some questions and concerns. I also asked about the amendments to budget. And the first thing was for West Covina to be mindful of how they spend their tax dollars. And on, on the 21st of April, we talked about the property tax revenue being budgeted 26,680,000. And unfortunately, in my opinion, uh, March and December 31 of 2019, we had only obtained 4.9 million, putting us at a budget of 18.5%, which means that between now and the end of June, we're going to have to try to see if we could obtain 21,700,000 to be on point at 100% of the budget. And given, of course, the current financial situation of the city and the state, that doesn't look very hopeful, unfortunately. Our second source of revenue, as you all know, is sales tax. And we budgeted 16.9 million in revenue to be attained by the end of our fiscal year. As of the 31st of December, we had only acquired 5.7 million, which put us at 33.8% of our goal. Mentioned, um, in the report was the possibility of declining sales tax somewhere between 2 and 4 million. But in speaking to the Finance Department and city manager, I think it's going to be even greater than that. And unfortunately, while we could not foresee this pandemic coming last June, this large amount will decrease and definitely take a toll on the city's bottom line. Also, under the amendment for revenue, which was budgeted at 591,000. This is some good news. We did exceed that budget at the end of December by 1.4 million, putting us at 341% of budget. There was some prop money, Proposition A, exchanged early, which allowed us to obtain a larger source of revenue than we had originally projected, which is also good news. There were a few key things to the amendment that I just wanted to reiterate. Before you, on April 21, it was requested that the budget be amended by 2.3 million. And a couple of key points were the election that took place in March had originally been budgeted for $3,200,000 and it exceeded by $280,000, increasing the budget to $283,000. Most importantly, there were propositions and measures that we had targeted for revenue. However, there are a couple so far that have been on target. Most of them are below. And given the current financial situation with the county and the state, I'm not, I'm a little concerned as to whether we'll meet our targeted percentage. My suggestion would be, is if possible, that we follow up, and I'm sure the city's probably thought to do this, follow up with any county and state funding that could come our way, especially when it came to grants, and see if we're able to retain that money, which hopefully will help our bottom line. And lastly, I'd like to ask West Covina to be mindful as to how you spend your tax dollars. Given the information in this report, like many cities, we see a tough road ahead of us. However, if we all come together and be mindful in how we're spending our dollars and byproducts and services here in West Covina, well, we are possibly able to close the gap on our budget. On a side note, I just kinda did a little survey. And West Covina is fortunate enough to have more than 30 gas stations, which will get built, but tax, sales tax for that within our city limits, which generates tax revenue. There's more than 100 eateries to choose from and 20 grocery stores within 17 miles to the limit. Each one of these sources will generate as much needed sales tax that our city needs. If we all become mindful, let's continue to shop and support West Covina and our small businesses. I wish you all the best during these hard times. Thank you for letting me give this report, and I hope you all continue to be safe and healthy.
Thank you, Ms. Rosati. Okay, and, um, thank you so much that we, we really need to, we need to shop local.
Thank you, Rosati.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Hello?
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk is calling the next speaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have our next speaker, Mr. Chris Miller.
Mr. Miller, go ahead.
Hello. Hello, uh, Mayor Wu and Council. Tonight, I'd like to talk about a couple of items. The first one is number two. One thing I would like to commend Mr. Carmini on is that he actually got shareholders this time correct as opposed to Chris Freeland, who thought shareholders were the city council employees. It was correctly stated that it's actually the residents and business holders of West Covina. But like many of the, um, the speaker before, Jay and Jerry, it's written in such a sense that it's a wish list. It's not any, you know, direct definitive, uh, course of action. And the language should be more written as a standard. Thou shalt do this, thou shalt do that. With that, also, I didn't see anything in there when it comes in terms of labor and, um, expenses for overtime or anything else. Yep, to date, we still have not seen the overtime, which I'm sure will be back, especially if we get into a situation of furloughs, which we'll talk about later tonight. I would like to see, you know, a master plan. One of the things that I've talked about at many previous council meetings when we've talked budgets is there's always a tendency for, oh, no, we had something fail, we have to fund it. If we're running the city properly, we should know exactly what a capital outlay is. There's some talk in the budget about that, but there's no definitive, um, things to do. So that's one major item that needs to be addressed. And which gets into another item, which is, uh, the item seven of the agenda tonight. A lot of the issues on there, especially in the police department, are things that haven't been addressed that have just sestered. The one thing I'd like to, I want to know about this joint resolution of pooling human resources in essence with other cities in the, you know, in the Detroit Powers, is what are we giving up? What kind of controls are we losing? Because in order to join something, you usually have to give up something. So, you know, what is the total pros and cons of this? You know, in this, uh, agenda item, it doesn't show that. You know, by, by and far, we need to know what we're losing and what we're gaining. And then finally, uh, but actually not finally, but the next item, item five, I, all my sentiment on the telecom, uh, issues, I, you know, want to reiterate what was said previously by, um, Mayor Sykes. You know, I don't want to see cell towers going everywhere. I don't think it's needed. We need to do this wisely. And then finally, is, you know, as far as opening businesses and having cloud, it seems like a lot of this, you know, why is it that major corporations such as Costco and Walmart can open, but Kohl's can't? Or, you know, things like that. And the biggest is the small mom and pop, uh, you know, businesses. Orange County is grouping together to fight the state on what can be opened and what can't. Perhaps LA County can do the same and get our businesses going. Because as the caseloads are going down, social distancing, you know, is it really an issue? And we need our lifeblood of businesses going back. I mean, you heard multiple speakers talking about, uh, our revenues are way down. So how do we- do we combat that, bring things back? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Yep, thank you so much. Okay, uh, next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call our final speaker, Mr. Mike Ferrer. One moment, please.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've tried several times to reach Mr. Mike Ferrer. He had comments on the telecom, um, telecommunications item. He is not answering.
You want to try one more time? Otherwise, we have to move on.
Yes, sir, one moment.
Okay, would you please?
Mr. Mayor, it's going to voicemail again.
Okay, um, maybe Mike can call back later on, but thank you so much. Okay, then we move on to, uh, city managers. Okay, we have, uh, six concerned resident regarding their issue. Would you please respond of some of their concern? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Wu and Council. This is City Manager Dave Carmany. I would appreciate a chance just to respond briefly to some of the comments and suggestions that were made during our public comment period. Before I do, I'd just like to reemphasize how much I really miss being able to hold regular city council meetings and have people here in the chambers, and I really appreciate that people are making the extra effort to contribute, you know, with written comments and, and phone in, et cetera. Um, we had five speakers tonight address different aspects of audit and, and finance matters. During a disaster, the auditor is truly a municipality's best friend, and we welcome the comments, and we look forward to the next meeting of the Audit and Finance Committee, which is scheduled for May the twenty-seventh. That night, we're going to present the preliminary budget for next fiscal year, which takes effect July first, and then we'll also go live that night with a citizen response survey for those that are unable to be in attendance at that meeting. The preliminary budget will be presented to the public and the council at your meeting of June the second, and we've scheduled a community workshop regarding the budget for June the ninth. We expect council, um, action consideration of the budget on June the twenty-third. So there'll be a lot of conversation about the budget in the, in the weeks ahead. Regarding the comments about telecom facilities, I don't believe Mr. Sykes needed things further from us, and, um, I'm appreciative of the comments from Councilmember Munoz from, uh, La Puente. I think that's all I've got this evening. We'll address more about the city's finances when we get to the next agenda tonight regarding the fiscal emergency.
And I think the number two speaker is, uh, Mr. Sykes, and the number six, uh, Mr. Miller, talk about the, the small cell towers, okay, and then regarding the agenda number five. So you want to answer right now, okay, or you want to wait for the, okay, the agenda? Okay, I think their concern is why we need to approve this, so you maybe have to expand to them, is this from the federal government request, or the city have to have some kind of a guideline?
We're happy to address, Mr. Mayor, Agenda Item Five. I want to ask our Assistant City Manager Mark Persico to address the, the substance of the comments about the wireless telecommunications facility matter that's on your, um, second reading and consent calendar tonight. Mr. Persico?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager and Councilmembers. The item on the consent calendar tonight is to confirm action and direction that the city council gave two weeks ago. These are only for cell towers in the public right-of-way. They're called small cell facilities, and they are, um, really prescribed very heavily by the Federal Communications Commission. And this ordinance that the city council will be adopting this evening, or I should say scheduled to adopt this evening, um, conforms with the Federal Communications Act requirements and will allow for small cell sites, um, in the public right-of-way. Cell sites on private property can only be permitted in the commercial and industrial areas, and those would go through the regular permitting process to the planning commission. This ordinance sets up, um, the city council as the final review authority for small cell sites, and I believe that answers, uh, the speaker's questions.
Okay, you so much for clarify. Okay, and regarding, okay, I think a couple of speaker regarding their concern about the meeting of, uh, Audit or Finance Committee. So, um, I don't know, uh, when we're going to schedule, maybe, uh, due to this time. I know we're still under this pandemic, but, um, we can do something like this for the committee to have some information, okay, and that's what this for, right? So, City Manager, do you want to respond for it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is City Manager Dave Carmany. The Audit Committee will be meeting on May the twenty-seventh. That evening, they'll be receiving the city's preliminary budget as their agenda item, and then we will at that moment encourage broad public dissemination of the budget. And there's a series of meetings, um, following that, once it's, um, given to the Audit and Finance Committee on May the twenty-seventh. During my next city manager's report, I've got on the slide some of those dates highlighted for you. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, thank you so much, then we move on.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is Assistant City Clerk Lisa Sherrick. I have the speaker on the line, if you'll permit him the time to speak.
Yeah, go ahead, let him talk. Yes, go ahead.
One moment, one moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as a councilman, I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you for taking me out of order, uh, due to the technical difficulty. I, I would like to address, if I may, the, uh, item number five for, uh, telecommunications ordinance, uh, relative, uh, to tonight's agenda. You may recall, having, having heard from me, uh, on the fifth of this month, uh, when I spoke on behalf of Verizon Wireless, um, I, I am here in this, in this capacity again this evening. Um, my, my request at this point is, is simply to renew, um, the, an urge this council to consider, um, either pulling this item, or at, at the very least directing staff to get together with industry to take some, uh, some industry input, um, incorporate that in a revised draft of the ordinance. I, I recognize that staff had alluded to an intention to revisit the small cell, excuse the, small cell design standards, um, but due to the interplay of both the design standards that currently exist and the current, uh, ordinance that is being proposed, I think it's imperative that both of these things be viewed as, as one working, uh, body. Part of the reasons why, and I understand and recognize that this is, and staff is as well eager to, to, to get this on the books, I understand, uh, this is effectively something of a federal and, and state level mandate that, um, that localities are, are being, uh, you know, compelled to comply with. But one step further, if, if I may, just if you'll indulge me, the, the black letter requirements of, of the twenty-eighteen FCC infrastructure order, uh, all, implicate, uh, the carriers themselves and what is technically feasible. I, I think it's, I think it's really important for staff to have the opportunity to meet with carriers who are ultimately going to be the ones to have the insight as to what's technically feasible. What, what we currently are looking at in this, because of the current ordinance, uh, poses a number of, of challenges that, that I'm, I'm concerned would, would potentially pose a prohibition of service throughout West Covina. My main concern is to ensure that the residents and business owners of the rest of West Covina are insured to have the outstanding service that we are accustomed to providing, uh, that that service does not, uh, does not waver, uh, as more and more demand is put upon our infrastructure. These facilities are, are going to be very well designed and inobtrusively, uh, cited, and we aim to work well with staff in that, in that effort. Uh, but I think as currently written, the ordinance would, uh, does require some additional, uh, input from carriers, as each carrier has their own unique technical requirements, and that, that I don't believe are, are taken into account with the current draft. That, that, I would simply ask that, uh, the council directs staff to, to re, uh, revise this ordinance or meet with industry to, to entertain revisions, um, and, and return to this body in, you know, a matter of months in order that, uh, this, this current ordinance does not delay any further deployment. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, now, we close all communication, we have, uh, City Manager, we to respond to the concern resident. Now we move on to, uh, City Manager Report, and the City Manager, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is City Manager Dave Carmany. I have a brief, um, PowerPoint manager's report this evening. First slide is a picture of, uh, New Storm Day Improvement in front of Orangewood Elementary. Councilmen may recall, this has been the subject of some citizen requests, and, uh, we were able to dovetail this one with another public works project and get, um, approval by the county, and it's always fun when these things actually get to the construction phase, so we think it'll be in place, um, prior to the rainy season. Um, the next slide is a depiction of yet another community meeting. We're trying as best we can to do these virtually, and so this one pertains to a proposed traffic signal at La Puente Road and Fort Castle Avenue. It's available on our website if people want to understand what that project is all about or offer opinions, um, please, please check the city website. The next one I mentioned previously, which is a schedule of some upcoming community budget meetings, um, starting with the Finance and Audit Committee meeting, which is scheduled for six P M. on May the twenty-seventh. That same night, we're going to open an online community survey for people that want to just use that as a vehicle to express their opinion. And then City Manager's going to hold a budget workshop on June the ninth, which is the Tuesday in between council meetings. We don't have a planning commission scheduled for that night, so we're going to do that one also virtually at six P M. on June the ninth. Most of our conversations these days pertain to COVID-nineteen updates. We do, um, daily continue, uh, activation of our emergency operations center. Our data as of, um, yesterday is that there are two hundred and eight cases, reported cases from our residents in West Covina, um, a total of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one cases in all of LA County. We, um, like to believe that we're, we're doing better. As the statistics get better, we're participating in alignment with the LA County Health Department. All retail stores are now able to open if they're following curbside pickup policies, and, um, we're very anxious for the economy to get back and, um, watching this quite closely. Next slide is a, um, picture of the way in which we're going to be honoring, um, our heroes this Memorial Day. People, members of the public are welcome to submit photos of veterans, if they could tell us their name and their branch of service and their rank by email. Get it to, um, Suzie Perez, S Perez, at West Covina dot org. We're going to share a video and have some remarks by, um, elected officials, including the mayor, um, that day. I wish we could have a in-person ceremony, but those are suspended, so we're going to do it, uh, virtually on Memorial Day. That's all I have this evening. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, City Managers. Okay, now we'll move from consent calendars. Okay, we have, uh, one, two, seven, any agenda, okay, City Council want to pull?
Yes, this is Mayor Proton, let's see, I want to pull out Agenda Five.
Okay, number five pulled by Mayor Proton Lopez Viado. Any other agenda, okay, to be pulled?
No, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Johnson, I'll just pull number five too, to talk about it.
Okay, so, so number five have been pulled, okay, and then we are going to approve, okay, the, uh, to Agenda One, Two, Three, Four, Six, Seven, and who's going to move the motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson, I'll move the motion.
Okay, Councilman Johnson, move the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mayor Proton Lopez Viado, second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, uh, motion approved, five zero, for Agenda One, Two, Three, Four, Six, Seven. Now, Agenda Number Five, uh, Mayor Proton Lopez Viado, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor Wu. Um, on the staff's agenda report, last paragraph or bullet point of the first page, it states that the planning commission typically has the authority to review and make decisions to projects located on private property. The ordinance will not change the review process for projects located on private property, yet those wireless facilities located on public right-of-way will have the city council have the final authority. Well, obviously, what we've seen and experienced in the last situation where residents had to come up with money just to contest the planning commission's decision, um, to the council, I just want to repeat, um, I just don't want to see this, uh, repeat where residents had, they had to come up with, I believe, was like three thousand seven hundred fifty just to appeal the last cell tower issue. Therefore, I'd like to make sure that all, whether it's public right-of-way or private property, will come to the city council for, uh, final approval. And then second was, well, there's a few things. Second, there's no limit on, um, how many cell towers will be out in our city. And third, I, with the last caller in regards, from the Verizon, in regards to, um, having industry input, I actually don't mind that at all, um, to pull this out, to have them revise for industry importance, since, I mean, he did say it could take months. I don't mind waiting, there's no rush to get this through, um, so I can be, I request to, like, pull it and have them take care of those things that I just mentioned. Thank you.
So let me understand your request. First, okay, basically, you want to clarify, um, okay, basically, even in the private property, the cell tower, even small cell towers, even approved by the planning commissioner, have to go to council to get the final approval? Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're talking about, um, okay, possible accepting, um, the industry inputs, so meaning you suggest to table it? This is kind of...
Correct. There's no rush to, um, approve this, or, I, there, there's, obviously, with this whole thing, including our residents and everybody else, um, in the industry and out, is, you know, they want this to be fixed correctly. No rush on it.
Got it, okay. Maybe the city attorney, um, that specialized in the cell tower can give us some of the input about, do we have time to, can we table this, or we have to get this set to comply with federal government requirement, okay, on...
Yeah, that's what I saw. Thank you, Mayor. This is Baron Bettenhausen, Deputy City Attorney. Uh, I've worked with staff on this ordinance. Yes, thi- this ordinance actually has been a, a kind of a long time incoming. The, the FCC, uh, issued their order over a year ago, uh, asking cities to put in place, uh, a, a process specifically for the small cell facilities. The council does have discretion to delay on this, but I would just point out that this is already significantly past their deadline, which was, uh, April of last year, where they, they asked cities to put this in place. More than happy to discuss with the industry, uh, any updates or changes. My concern, though, is that with, right now, the city doesn't really have anything in place, so, you know, applicants can come in tomorrow, uh, and the city has less control or ability to regulate than it will once we get this in place. Uh, it's a little easier to fine tune some... Uh, it's a little easier to fine tune something than, than where we have nothing right now. And it, it creates more confusion and issues. So our recommendation is actually to adopt it, uh, this second reading tonight. And then more than happy to meet with industry officials for their input and discussion.
Got it. We, we kind of running out of time based on why you say that we should have this done last year. But, okay, we need to get this done ASAP, but, and we can still amend it to discuss with the industry and the older maybe resident later on. But we need to have at least some kind of guideline in place. Am I right?
Correct, sir. Yes.
Okay. And then regarding Mayor Protem question regarding the private property. And I, I need the, maybe the, our city planner, okay, our city planning manager to answer. Okay. Is the private property, is the same thing like right away and after planning commissioner approve, still need to move to the, okay, final approval from city council?
So, um, good evening, Honorable Mayor. This is Joanne Burns, city planning manager. And to, to answer, um, Mayor Protem's question, the ordinance is written so that it's the planning commission decision for small wireless facilities or wireless facilities in the public right of way are, are the only, um, types of projects that is just a recommendation by the planning commission and it goes to the city council. The other wireless prop, uh, wireless telecommunication permits on pu, on, on private property would not go to the city council unless it is appealed. Um, and typically for?
I just have to, um, the, the only thing is, I, this is Mayor Protem Letty again. Uh, the only thing that I didn't like about the appealing process is that there's residents who don't have the money to come up to appeal. So that, that bothered me greatly, especially those without money. So I don't like the appeal process. We just went through that again. We just went through that. And I don't want to have to see residents come up with money that they don't have to struggle to appeal something that was in their favor at the end. So that's why I wanted to make sure that whether it's private or public, that everything comes back to the council.
Uh, okay.
Because it's for fairness.
Mayor Protem, understand. Okay. And, and let me follow up the question, your question. Okay. Uh, uh, there have a difference between the small cell tower and the regular cell tower guideline. Because my understanding before, even the planning commissioner approved the private property with cell tower, this year have to go to the council approval. I went through it in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So, so I went through it. So I, I don't know why this is different, only approved by the, okay, planning commissioner and won't go to the city council to get the final approval because this is a small cell tower. It's a, or, or the cell tower will be comply with the same guideline.
Um, it's, it's all, um, telecommunication wireless permit facilities in the public right of way. So this ordinance only deals with, um, pi, um, telecommunication facilities in the public right of way. Um, so that's in basically public property, which the city council?
Understand. Um, we're talking, not questioning about that. We're questioning about private property. We're talking about the cell tower, small cell tower or a regular cell tower on the private property. Are they going to comply with the same as, uh, property right of way, have the planning commissioner approve? Okay. And then still have to go to the city council to get the final approval. Right? I think this is what?
This, this is councilmember Shoemaker. The, right now, we're dealing with the public right of way. If we want to have the same rules in place for private property, then we need to bring back the ordinance in dealing with private property. I think that's where the confusion lies. So this will not address private property. Maybe in the background, the session of staff will put, they tell us what it says. But in terms of what we're approving tonight, it's just the public right of way. So I think to address Mayor Protem Lopez Viado's concern, it would be, if we found all this tonight, which direction to bring back the ordinance dealing with private property.
Okay. A good point. Okay. Um, so a city attorney, uh, should we, okay, uh, bring back the private property or can we amend it in this time? Okay. Or we just, for here, we just approve the, of you right of way? Can we do amended?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is city turn, this is Tom. You can go move forward this time for a second reading, adopt this, and then direct staff to begin the process of amending, um, the cell towers on private property, right?
Okay.
We'll bring that back.
Very good. Okay. And basically, and all the city council have any question? I think Law, you have some question, right?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page twenty-six, under F, right there, on the second line, I'm concerned about the, uh, the, uh, writing on there. It says something about, uh, located underground unless the city staff determines. I don't want to put this in the hands of city staff. The minimum should say unless it's planning commission, uh, recommends it. Because, uh, they may say, okay, this will be fine there. And then the residents say, why does you guys okay this? Now, I'd like to see the, uh, planning commission or even a planning commission and a city council. If you're going to variate from what we want, everything to go underground, if they don't put something above ground, if you read down, further on down there, they can screen them or camouflage them, whatever they want to do with them. I, I would like to see that, really. Uh, I, I don't want the city staff to determine if it's okay. Can we change that?
Yep. So basically you want to amend the wording right there to, from the staff into the planning commissioner and the city council to decide?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
So, so city attorney, can we do that tonight?
Mr. Mayor, let Jo, let Joanne answer, uh, first why staff have the authority to do that.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Um, okay, thanks, mayor. Um, as far as staff determining whether there is room in the public right of way. So that, what that just means is that the engineer, the engineering division would be able to determine whether or not there's ADA access on the sidewalk so that, um, so that, um, ADA is not violated if, uh, if a, if a, if a pole is going to be placed in the public right of way. That's, that's something that's already written into, um, it, um, federal ADA guidelines or laws. So it's not something that, that is, um, it's not something that's subjective or?
Got it. So?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and if you make any changes, if, Mr. Mayor, if you make a, if you make a change, that change tonight, we would have to bring that back for a second reading again. That's, that's a substantial change to this ordinance.
Got it. So?
We recommend you move forward with it tonight.
Okay, uh, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. I, I don't have a problem with the pole there. But what they're saying, they can put their equipment in a box above ground, even if it's on the sidewalk. And I have a problem with that. That I can't accept.
I, 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 my? Yeah, I understand. But as I remember, they already, we already required everything have to underground. Okay.
Yeah, but it says in that line right there. It says in that line there that the staff can determine if it goes above ground right there. And I don't want, I don't want it to go there. I'm sorry.
So, okay. And so basically then I'll go back to the, uh, the staff, the planning manager. Okay. Because the concern is above ground. Because it look like, okay, the staff can determine, okay, that can be above ground and that is what, uh, some other city council, they against anything above ground at all.
Well, uh, this is councilmember Shoemaker. Um, we have ordinances that require undergrounding. This requires undergrounding. Certain things like the electric meter, we cannot require to be underground because federal law trumps that. And so what staff has stated is the reason they need this language in here is one, federal regulations. And two, they need the ability to determine ADA requirements. And so that sounds like it would be the only time where they determine. I mean, if there's no room underground, there's no room underground. And if, you know, if undergrounding isn't feasible, for example, let's say the hills I live by, you can't get into them to put equipment there. I mean, there have to, um, way that staff can determine based on their expertise whether or not something can go underground. Not only that, they're well aware of the requirements of our ordinances that require it to be underground, that require utilities to be underground, that we have the requirements in place for thirty years. So I think we still need to move this forward, um, again, because we need an ordinance in place. We've been talking about this for over a year. Um, I understand the industry wants to, they're too sentient, but they've also had over a year. And so the federal regulations are pretty loose when it comes to them and limits what we can do anyway. So I have no problem with, once again, discussing this with them, but we need to put something in place. We already know we have applications pending. And the last thing we want to do is leave ourselves in a place where we get sued, go to court, and all of the ones that have been turned in that we have turned down didn't get put in place. So, um, I understand the concern about the undergrounding, but I understand the federal law and our staff's responsibilities too. So I would like to see this move forward tonight.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, councilmember Shoemaker. Any other council have any comment or any question? Go ahead. Anybody? If none, then I'm going to have any? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'd, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to add, I'd, I'd think we need to move this forward just to comply with the federal statutes and we'll still be able to work with the carriers and with the concerns of the residents going forward.
Okay. Very good. Okay. And, uh, who want to move the motion? I, I think the motion basically is approve the ordinance plus we're going to bring back the private property ordinance for city council to discuss. So?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, to, so, um, city attorney, am I right? We are going to approve, motion to approve and bring back the private property ordinance back to city council to discuss. Am I right?
That's correct. Yes. I, I think staff will generate that and it'll go through planning commission first and then back to city council.
Very good. Okay. And do I have a second?
I'll second. Councilmember Shoemaker.
Okay. Councilmember Shoemaker's second. So I have a first, uh, uh, move by Councilman Casiano, second by councilmember Shoemaker, and the city, uh, attorneys, assistant city attorney, assistant city clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Hi.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
No.
Mayor Wu.
I approve three, two. Okay. And, um, a motion approved. Okay. Then we move on to public hearing. Uh, public hearing item number eight regarding the issuance of a tax exempt bond for the eminent health queen of the valley hospital. Uh, this hearing is held under the authority under the pursuant to section one four seven of the, okay, intern, okay, uh, Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended. The purpose of this hearing received common relate to the proposed issuance by the California statewide community development authority of a tax exempt bond for the financing of eminent health facility in West Covina, Covina and Glendora. Not exist two hundred and sixty million dollars. It should be note that ID the bond, uh, issued, the city has no financial obligation. But assistant city clerk verified the proper legal notice has been given.
Proper notice has been verified, mayor.
Okay. At this time, I shall open the public hearing regarding the issuance of the tax exempt bond for the eminent health queen of the valley hospital. There will first be the presentation of the staff report. Then shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, then those opposed. Mr. Carman, city manager, who will present the staff report?
Good evening, mayor and council. The staff report this evening will be presented by our, um, deputy city manager, economic development manager, um, Paulina Morales.
Yeah, go ahead, please. Paulina, would you please?
Hi. Sorry about that. I had to unmute my phone. Apologies. So, um, good evening, mayor and fellow council members. The item before you tonight is a public hearing regarding the issuance of tax exempt bonds for eminent health queen of the valley hospital. Um, the eminent health is requesting, um, or through the California State Community Development Authority, um, they're looking to issue bonds not to exceed two hundred and sixty, uh, million for, um, the financing and refinancing of debt for eminent health regarding three facilities. Um, uh, the one in West Covina being eminent health queen of the valley hospital, uh, Covina and in Glendora as well. Um, the, sorry, so here, so the California State Community Development Authority is the, um, California Joint Exercise Powers Act that provides California local governments with an effective tool for the timely financing of community-based public, uh, benefit projects. Um, they are allowed to, through them, issue tax exempt bond financing for community infrastructure, affordable housing, and make access available to quality healthcare and education among, and education among others. Um, as West Covina is a government, uh, unit having jurisdiction over the queen of the valley facility, um, which would be getting a portion of the bond proceeds, um, they have asked for, uh, the TEPRA hearing, um, which allows for the community to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Um, as the city is only a conduit, um, we have no financial obligation to, uh, the bonds that are being, or will be issued. Um, this is a rendering of the proposed, uh, queen of the valley expansion. Eminence is seeking, as mentioned, uh, exempt bonds not to exceed two hundred and sixty million for the three facilities. Um, a portion of those bonds will be used for the expansion and a portion to refinance existing debt. Um, the city has been working with eminent health, um, in regards to the hospital expansion. Um, they've already obtained approval for their specific plan, um, including a zone change and general plan amendment and their E I R document. Um, they have submitted for their precise, uh, precise plan for the medical office building and the parking structure, which is in plan review. Um, and here you see the renderings of the proposed medical arts building, um, and then this is a parking structure. We have representatives from, uh, eminent health, Charles, uh, or Chuck Riddle, Tony Boykley, uh, and Debbie Super on, uh, on the phone if you guys have any questions, as well as, um, individuals from, uh, James Hamel, from California statewide communities development authority and bond counsel as well. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you so much. And council, any question? Anybody have a question? None? Okay. Then, um, uh, who has a question?
No, I said none.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, so, uh, assistant city clerk, do we have any comment from resident regarding this issue?
No, mayor, we have no comments.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the, uh, the public comment and bring back city council discussion and comment. Any city council have any comment or question again? None?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, I like the design. I think it's going to be really beautiful over there. It's really going to do a lot of upgrade and make the city look a lot nicer and it's doing wonders for the queen of valley. So I'm all for this. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so, yep, good job. Okay. And any other council has any question? Or you want to ask, Chuck's on the phone, right? Who want to ask any question? He's on the phone. Nobody has question?
No, no question.
Okay. So hopefully, uh, we approve the bond we find out so they can start the, the construction right away. We cannot wait. Okay. We cannot wait to have a beautiful hospital. So, so do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Uh, this is, uh, councilman Casiano moved the motion to approve. Then I have a councilman Johnson. Can I roll call, please?
Councilman Castellanos.
Hi.
Councilman Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Hi.
Mayor Wu.
I. Motion approved five zero. So we're going to move to A B one, two, three, four conference and meeting, of course, we don't have because we're still in the pandemic. And do any, mother may I, do we have any council have any requests?
This is Mayor Protem. Um, I don't, I'm not sure if this would be a request or if the city's already doing it. Um, I, I know the thing right now about opening business. I, I feel like the lockdown, you know, staying at home has uh more negative consequence than the virus itself. And, you know, statistics prove this, you know, postponing surgeries, doctors, visits, isolation, suicide, domestic violence, increased lost income, um, deaths that's indirectly related to coronavirus. So I just wanted to see if the city um is working on, you know, opening our business. I know our, our stats for the COVID is not as high as the um LA County. Um, and then I do recall that uh last Friday, we received um a letter from county that they're not going to give us our property tax until January, which I feel like is ridiculous because we compi- uh, we complied with county um through the whole COVID process. But I do, you know, I wanted to make sure that you are still looking for city, I mean, state or county side. Hello? Um, but in regards to like the opening of a business, I just want to see, I don't know if it's a mother may I or, or the city can, is already doing something about that, if you could answer my question in opening up West Covina. And of course, we want to continue the safe practice in place, focusing on keeping the vulnerable safe, but just not with the cost of everything else.
Very good. I, I, okay, I understand your, okay, mother may I or your request. I think city manager maybe can answer regarding, I understand we need to go with the county health department, okay, their guideline due to city. We don't have a health department, so, so we base on that. But, um, we want to maybe uh kind of uh check with other city at the same size like us, and we have a four thousand business and how we can give a clear signal regarding, we already on the phase two. So at a low risk and how many businesses we can kind of have them to come back and with, okay, social distance and masks to help them to kind of gradually uh establish and kind of uh normalize our life. So city manager, maybe you can give us some of uh, uh light? Go ahead.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members of the public. This is city manager Dave Carmini. Um, I hear you loud and clear in terms of our strong desire to get our economy back and our businesses reopen. We are following quite closely the LA County Health Department order and this is a topic um almost constantly within city hall. I know we are continuing with our social media posts and our outreach to our business community to take every advantage afforded us under the county health department's order. Um, we had some of those updates in the manager's report tonight, but I'm taking it quite seriously. It's one of our very highest priorities. And I'm happy to report back to the council as to our continued efforts and progress in this area.
Okay, thank you, city manager. And I think we need a little bit uh detail in how to bring all those businesses back because a lot of them possibly want to give up. We want to help them to say, don't give up. And I, I, we approved tonight the CDBG fund to help the small business, so we need to promote, okay? And I understand maybe we don't have that much of money from the federal government, but it's, at least it's a start, okay? We can help the small business, okay, mom apart restaurant, okay, all those businesses to kind of reestablish in our city. Uh, uh, I think we need to, uh, okay, very, very, okay, and aggressively try to, okay, let them understand the city will side by side with them and help them to come back, okay? And it's very tough for them, for their family, for their business, and they're fighting for whole life, but suddenly they're overnight, okay, upside down. So, so we, 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 we see what we can do, but let, let's get some kind of a detail and see the promotion for our, okay, and city, our small business in West Covina. We have a lot. We have about three, four thousands of them, okay? And we, we depend on them because that's our job and our revenue coming from, especially when our county don't give us money. And we really have to find some revenue someplace to pay the bill. So, and other city council have any mother may I only requests? If none, I'm going to go, um-
I'd like to make a statement, please. Mr. Mayor, may I make a favor, Councilman Johnson?
Would you please? Okay, Councilman Johnson, go ahead.
Yes, it's not a mother may I or request. I will have to, uh, take to do this, uh, to correct our city manager. As of today at four o'clock, this year, West Covina's had two hundred and twenty-nine residents that were affected by this uh coronavirus. And I also want everybody to know, if they want to have an up to date, day by day, how this thing is moving, I update my Facebook every day. If there's any increases, I put them on there with the same date. So I'd like to pass that forward to anyone that wants to find out day by day. We're, we're going. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Johnson, and uh, I think Councilman Casiano, you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to say, to let his comment very well said. I think, uh, everybody's thinking the same thing in terms of reopening. I know our city staff and city manager have been working hard to do everything we can. I know our council, we've all been emailing the county supervisor's office requesting to, for them to consider us opening up a little bit more, especially as we pointed out due to our lower cases relative to our surrounding cities. So I hope we can make something happen. I, I know we got to do it safely. But we, we need to help our businesses, so that, that's the only thing I'll add. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Casiano. I think, uh, no, we just, uh, again, okay, uh, help the small business and just continue and try to protect the, the population with the mask, with the social distance. Okay, I, I think we can find a balance, but we need to do something, okay, in this time, okay, and for our, our residents' lives. Anyway, uh, if we don't have anybody want to speak, I'm going to have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion?
Okay, uh, second, okay, very good. And uh, uh, our regular council meeting adjourned now.